Lunches. At Garfield, breakfast was sixty-three eighty-nine and the lunches were eighty-eight twenty-seven. Guthridge, the breakfast was fifty-five fifty-four and lunches was ninety-nine forty-four. Middle School was ninety-two forty-nine for breakfast, which they are serving about a hundred and eighty kids for breakfast. Hundred kids, second chance. It's a lot. And fourteen thousand lunches. High School has really took an increase in breakfast and lunch. Breakfast was fifty-six forty-six and lunches was a little over thirteen thousand. We had twenty-nine eighty for St. Pat's. And we do our Viking Vittles, which is a sports mils that goes out with the sports, which consists of a sandwich, chip, fruit, snack, water. We've done five hundred and two of those for the high school and four hundred and thirty-four for the middle school. So we've been busy.
What do you attribute the uptick at the high school? Do you have any idea why that's gone up dramatically?
I think it's because the juniors stay at the high school now and just the seniors has to leave.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Any further questions?
They're busy cooking this day.
That seems to be a lot of meals.
A lot of meals.
And we have, we bought, or the board bought the box truck and it is getting wrapped this week. So next week, when you see it out, it's all wrapped for food service.
All right.
It's cool. It is pretty cool.
It's pretty cool.
It is. We'll have to send pictures out.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the update. Okay, moving on to nine point zero, we need to hear from Ms. Hunter about a tri-counting.
Well, first off, we had a presentation by Jamie Whitley, who is in charge of the STARS team, which is the support team for at-risk students. And it used to be called the TAC team, and when she said that, oh, but it's completely changed, really. It's much more extensive and it was very interesting to hear about. So I really enjoy those updates that they give. And then we talked about the legislative luncheon. I think it was in your Viking View. You mentioned that, that two board members can go with our superintendent, and that's in January. And then she, the board is, we were introduced to a draft needs assessment that she's giving out to all of the superintendents so that they can list their priorities and think about things ahead of time for what they feel like they need in their district. So she gave us a copy of that to see. And then she talked about the Medicaid fee for service and it's one of the revenue streams, excuse me, for special education, but it's decreased this year. And she said mainly because it's going back to pre-COVID. And so there's not as much Medicaid reimbursement. So that was it.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Hunter? All right. Thank you very much for that report. Moving on to ten point zero, action to accept the donations to schools.
All right, that's on page thirty-one in your packet. So for the month of October twenty-twenty-four, Lincoln received donations from St. Vincent's for Halloween costumes, sixty dollars. Parsons State Hospital and Training Center pumpkins for students, five hundred twelve dollars. There was an anonymous donation for kids coats, hundred and twenty dollars. An anonymous restricted donation for parent-teacher conference meals, three hundred dollars. PTO made a restricted donation for parent-teacher conference meals valued at two hundred dollars. And there was the pumpkin penny war, where kids decorated as a class that raised one thousand twenty-three dollars worth of donations for a total of two thousand two hundred fifteen dollars at Lincoln. At Garfield, there was an anonymous donation of three hundred dollars for those restricted parent-teacher conference meals. Tank Connection made a donation for students, five hundred dollars. PTO conference meals as well, hundred and seventy-five dollars, for a total of nine hundred seventy-five dollars at Garfield. At Guthridge, PTO made a restricted fourth grade field trip donation, four hundred eighty dollars. An anonymous donation for conference food for parents, you know, the parent-teacher conferences, three hundred dollars. Domino's had their fundraiser, an unrestricted donation, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Casey's, three hundred dollars unrestricted donation. PTO made a restricted donation for conference food, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Tank Connection made their restricted donation for students, five hundred dollars, for a total at Guthridge of two thousand nine dollars twenty-seven cents. The middle school, there was an anonymous donation for conference meal money, three hundred fifty dollars. The class of nineteen fifty-eight made a donation to the leadership class, three hundred forty-two dollars thirty-six cents. Tank Connection made their yearly student account donation, five hundred dollars, for a total of one thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars thirty-six cents. At the high school, there was an anonymous donation to the D and D club, ten dollars. Jim Gilpin made a donation to the D and D club, ten dollars. There was an anonymous donation for parent-teacher conference meals, three hundred fifty dollars. The PHS Golden Reunion Committee made a two hundred dollar donation to the cheer program. Wave Wireless made a one hundred fifty dollar donation for attendance incentives. The Parsons Chamber of Commerce donated Chamber Bucks as an attendance incentive, fifty dollars. The Mustard Seed, twelve dollars for candy bars for an attendance incentive. McDonald's gave free french fries valued at thirty dollars as an attendance incentive. Taco Mile gave free tacos, fifty dollars worth as an attendance incentive. And Lubet Community College offered ten season passes valued at five hundred dollars as an attendance incentive as well. The FACS program received a donation from the Parsons Area Arts and Humanities Council for eighty-eight dollars, for a total of one thousand four hundred fifty dollars, the high school in the month of October. That made the total district donation seven thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars sixty-three cents for the month of October. So we appreciate everyone's generous support and I recommend that you approve those donations.
Some move?
Moved and seconded to approve that lengthy list of donations. If all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten point one, this is where we take action on that bid recommendation of Mr. Maguire. Motion on that to take action to approve Uplink with INA Alert as a backup in case Uplink cannot perform.
Some move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Uplink with the backup of INA Alert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Okay, motion carries. Ten point two, first reading of the KASB recommended policy updates.
Okay, so this is probably, we got, we got you a new one, a new packet. There were, I guess, a few typographical errors in the first one from KASB. And so they told us about that Thursday in our meeting, that we'd already sent the first one out. So here's the new one. And I've not gone through them to see what they were. The policies remain the same. Those weren't changed. There were just a few typos that were corrected. So this is just first reading. So if you have questions as you go through, please let me know. But this will be something that will be on the January board agenda for approval.
Thank you very much. Ten point three, we're going to remove them from the agenda. We do not need action on that.
We do not. S R three is completed as of September the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So we no longer have to have, we're no longer required to have that plan on the website. So.
Great.
Check. Yeah, that felt good to mark off one little S R project. Yeah.
Okay, ten point four, action on notice of federal interest. We kind of talked about this a couple of months ago.
Right.
Ready to discuss again.
It is. So this is a requirement of receiving those grant monies and using over a million dollars on a capital project, which we did at the middle school for the HVAC systems. So the last time we talked about it, there were some questions that came up that said, okay, well, someone said, well, what if something happens to the building, like there's a natural disaster or? I mean, we, we no longer say in Parsons, we don't have tornadoes. We don't say that anymore. And so, but we didn't know what would happen. And so when I checked, what they said is we would need to file an S F four twenty-nine form with the state and then just go ahead and proceed with the repairs or the rebuild. So that's, it would just be another additional form that we would need to fill out. The other question was, how long are they on the lien? How long do they have to be on the lien? And so when I, when I asked what's the length of time they're required to be listed and maintain an interest, that was the useful life of the property or until we dispose of it. It's an HVAC unit and twenty years max. Each year it's going to depreciate. The value of the unit will depreciate. Their interest in it will depreciate as well. And when the units no longer use, units are no longer usable, they'll, whoever the superintendent is, I'm thinking that'll be twenty years down the road, they'll have a form they need to fill out and that'll be it. Okay?
Yeah, maybe before the twenty years if we have to replace the system in like fifteen or something, whatever.
Yeah. And there is, there is some warranty, so hopefully we wouldn't have to, but there is always that. This actual, the federal interest blurb, like the whole, the whole form itself, when we asked K S D E for a form, they didn't have a form. They didn't have a form. But our business manager developed one and we sent it in and they were like, this looks great. And then I go to a superintendent's meeting, well, you know, lots of school districts are using the one that Laura has created. And so what we'll do is once it's approved this evening, she'll just have to file that with the county. Just file, who at? Someone at the county that registered that person. So.
I just think maybe she needs some kind of per diem.
Yeah, I feel like you should, you should be selling it.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway.
Put it on Etsy, or.
Yeah, we should have put it on Etsy. Teachers pay teachers. Business managers pay business managers.
Yeah, yeah. But she probably doesn't want that liability associated.
No, I don't think so.
Goes haywire for someone else.
Right. And she did it for us as the business manager, not as an attorney.
That's exactly right.
Yes, that is correct. So.
Okay, any other questions on that issue? It requires my signature, so.
It does.
I will need you to tell me to sign it with action of that sort. Because I won't sign it unless you tell me to.
And legally, we have to sign it because we spent a million dollars, so.
Oh, that conclusion that you said.
Second it, it's been away.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve my signature on that document and filing of that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. So now we have ten point five, which is, this is the first month of several months of job descriptions that we will be approving. Lou and I, in conjunction with discussion with Lori, decided we take these in piecemeal fashion. We've never really had job descriptions at this district, it was determined. And as a result, we need to kind of have those going forward for when positions get vacated and we need to present those to potential candidates. And so you've got these job descriptions tonight. Next month's meeting, you'll have others. Then February, you'll have others. Then March, you'll probably have others. And that will finish us up. So what do you have to say about these?
So when I handed these out, they're, on each of them, this is just a model that KASB gives us. It's just, just an example and we have to tweak it to make it Parsons. We're not going to take these because it very clearly states right at the top, basically here. This is just as a resource, so we don't want to just, you know, we want to make it ours. So when I look at the first one, it said, the job title said bus monitor slash para slash aid. In Parsons, that's just a bus monitor. So it would just say bus monitor. It also has the bus monitor number seven under the essential job functions, which you have to have on job descriptions now. It says communicate with teachers and parents regarding student behavior while on the bus. That is not something that our bus monitors do. And so that item would need to be removed. And then as we go through, then for the bus drivers, it, on their sample, it said you have to be eighteen. Well, in talking to Rick, because I had, I had him look at the transportation ones. I had Marla look at the food service ones. He said, you have to be twenty-one to drive a bus. So, I don't know. So it wouldn't be eighteen, it would be twenty-one. And then under their job descriptions, it said install snow chains during inclement weather. Guess what? No. We don't have snow chains. We don't do snow chains. That's not safe. So that would be, that item would just be marked out for us. So it really is just tweaking these to make them ours. The director of transportation, well, it left it blank who they would report to. Well, they would report to the superintendent. That's the way, that's what we do now. The directors all report to the superintendent. It listed qualifications as a bachelor's degree, which would be preferred, but it doesn't have the word preferred. So I, I want to make sure that it says preferred so that we're not boxing ourselves into something that is not attainable. And then as you go down, there were a couple of blank lines where the district had to put in how many years' experience. So how many years' experience of supervisory experience in transportation and fleet operations? Rick thought one or more because you could have ten, but we'd like for someone to at least have one year. Because what happens a lot of times is bus drivers get promoted to be supervisors. And so when it talked about years' experience as a bus driver, there, you cannot be a transportation or fleet operator director without at least two years of bus driving experience. So we would want for that to say two years. That was the only one there. On our, on, then as we move into the kitchen ones, they all call them child nutrition, cafeteria, and we just call it kitchen. That's what it, I mean, in Parsons, it's the kitchen worker, the kitchen manager, and then the food service director. So the kitchen worker, it didn't have any education requirements. And in the district, it's already in policy that a person has to have a high school diploma or a GED. So we would want for that to be added there. And then on the one that was the kitchen manager, and so that would be like what Sue does or what Richard does, she was telling you about, that certified food manager is one of the qualifications. That would be something that would be preferred. It is a class that you can take at L C C, and so our people take it. But a lot of times they don't take it till after they're hired. So. And then there was the blank where it wanted to know how many years of experience. So again, it would be preferred and in visiting with our nutrition, she felt like five years before they were a kitchen manager, you know, to have five years of working in food service operations. So we don't just get some random person that's never worked in a kitchen that wants, you know, is the kitchen manager. And then there's the food service director, which is what we call her. Again, a bachelor's degree being preferred and then that experience, you know, we'd like for them to have one to two years would be preferred in the food service management part of it. But then just, you know, at least five years working in a kitchen. So. So that's what those were, the way that we can tweak them for Parsons. And then the next round will be maintenance and custodial ones that I'll hand out. And then any corrections or changes that I have moving forward, I'll just write them on the form before we give them to you and highlight them so that you know.
So we've got one of two things. We can approve these descriptions with the friendly amendments she's discussed tonight. And we can take action tonight or we can defer action until you actually see those amendments made. What would the board prefer to do?
Go ahead with what you just said.
Okay, so go ahead and approve them with the friendly amendments that were verbalized then.
And I can include, I mean, I've written on there, scribbled out and written after meeting with them. So I can include these in your view on Friday so you know exactly what they say. But they just say what I.
All right. Your motion then?
Moved that we accept the job descriptions as stated with the friendly amendments.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve those job descriptions as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your host. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to ten point six, action on new accounting software, the Skyward system.
All right. So all of this information was included in the view on the twenty-second, but Laura is back there. She's here. So she, she can talk to you. I mean, if you've got questions about, you know, the recommendation is for Skyward to be the one that was purchased. And so.
I primarily am here for questions, so.
And all that information is pages forty-one through forty-seven in your packet. It's a lot of them.
We did, I mean, I tried to do as detailed of a review as possible, just based on my experience with prior software implementations, which I've unfortunately gone through many times. But you kind of learned some lessons along the way, so.
So in a nutshell, Skyward, you would recommend that for what reasons in a nutshell?
It is by far more technologically advanced than S U I is. I would say S U I is probably five years behind schedule and you recognize that because they are converting all of their current clients to a new actual web-based service. So we would convert and then have to convert again in another two or three years. And that is not a competitive model.
And this has everything integrated.
It's a native system, all components, whereas S U I has a lot of third-party solutions that they have purchased over time and merged together in modules, which is not.
But this will include the substitutes. This will include time management. So we'll move to where people are clocking in and out on their phone or on a kiosk. That, this, with Skyward, all of that is.
One, one shebang.
One shebang.
We want more user-friendly.
Yeah, they've had, they've had lots of, I don't know, so they had a whole day.
So many demos.
Where's the demos?
We use it at Green Bush, which is switched this last year, and I like it a lot better. It has a lot more capabilities for receipts, I mean, to everything, timing, clocking in.
And it is something, it's one of the programs that Green Bush does support in addition to. But the training for our staff with Skyward would, will be so much better, I think.
That would be the other main factor is the implementation model is much more industry standard with Skyward for an organization of this size.
Do you have any hands-on experience with Skyward?
I don't have experience with Skyward. We, at the higher education level, had experience with pollution, which is very, very similar in their delivery model. So I was actually quite surprised that S U I did not have a more robust model for implementing a solution for as many clients as they have. So.
Okay, so we need action to move forward with the Skyward acquisition, transition.
Based on her recommendation.
Yep.
You're recommending this, correct?
Yes.
Based on that recommendation, I move that we accept Skyward as the accounting software.
Second.
Moved and seconded to transition to Skyward. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got our first executive session here, ten point seven, for personnel matters for non-elected personnel. And we're going to start with fifteen minutes. And so I'm going to start without you and Jeff and do that thing first. So. Yeah, so anyways, we'll start with fifteen minutes. And so I need a motion on ten point seven for non-elected personnel. And we will exclude superintendent and assistant superintendent first in this.
Some move?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we enter executive session, discuss confidential employee information pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma at six forty-seven for fifteen minutes. And we return here seven oh two, and we will start off without superintendent and assistant superintendent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Okay. So, it is 09 and 7:09, and we're back in open session, so we're moving on to item 10.10, which is action on personnel.
All right. We've got some resignations from employment. Kelly Bedore, high school cheer coach, effective the end of the 24-25 season. And Kelly Bedore, also the high school spirit club sponsor, effective the end of the 24-25 season. I recommend that you approve that resignation.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Ms. Bedore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
One recommendation for employment, Hannah Mott, high school girls assistant wrestling coach, effective the 24-25 season.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded for that recommendation of Ms. Mott. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
All right. Two resignations for retirement, David Miller, evening floater custodian, effective December the 31st, 2024, and Jody Ray, Lincoln Title 1 aide, effective the end of the 24-25 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve those resignations for retirement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we've got 10.11, which is action on superintendent and assistant superintendent contract. So, to make sure everyone's clear, they both have contracts now that go through the 24-25 school year and 25-26 school year. Is that accurate?
That is correct. So, last year we were given a two-year contract, so this is, so then every.
Just adding one more year to that.
Adding one. So, there's always a two-year contract.
That's right. So, there's one more year added to that, so we need action on that.
Motion to approve the action on superintendent assistant superintendent contracts for 26-27.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve those contracts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And then 10.12, action on the principal contracts. That's just for the next upcoming year, 25-26.
So moved?
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve those principal contracts for 25-26. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries on that, too. Appears that is all that's on the agenda tonight, so we are adjourned. Thank you.
There's another question.